Okay, you're by all this meeting in order, City Council meeting June 7th, 2022. If anyone wishes to participate in a public hearing or follow the comment, please fill out the form right over there and give it to our city reporter. Anyone who wishes to speak. Roll call, please.
Councilor here.
Present. Here.
Councilor Lee.
Present.
I'm here.
Here. Approval admitted March 24th, 2022, City Council Public Hearing. Okay, have a motion in the second is reading discussion about the minutes. Okay, we'll go into a roll call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Approved.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll move on to our formal proceedings. 2022, 2023 City of Ormond Budget Hearing. Will now commence the hearing. The purpose of this hearing, the public hearing. So you just have to change the purpose of the of the hearing is for the City of Ormond City Budget Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 is called an order. Public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. The budget officer will present their report. Public testimony will be heard in the following order. The applicant, which is the budget officer, any testimony in support of the budget, any testimony opposing the budget, the budget officer's rebuttal if anything. Then we will close the public testimony after the record is closed for testimony. No other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the Budget Committee Commission has a specific question. The Budget Commission may ask questions of staff, after which the Budget Commission will discuss the matter and make a decision during the action items section of the agenda by use of resolutions. You wish to speak in regarding to the budget hearing, bill out a public testimony, comment testimony, sign up, form and submit it to the city reporter. I will then recognize that the people wishing to speak, any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep your testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantive criteria. All for abstentions. Now I ask members of the City Council disclose any ex parte contacts, bias or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the extent of your ex parte contact, bias or conflict of interest and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Are there any abstentions? I will now go to the part where we go to our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Ormond Budget Committee met on May 17, 2022, where they heard the budget message and the proposed budget for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. It was approved as presented for a total of $63,876,765. It was properly advertised and public notices were posted as needed. I bring now before the City Council, the Budget Committee's approved budget for this 2022, 2023 fiscal year and ask for adoption of this budget.
Thank you. So is there anyone who would like to speak in agreement with the applicant? Is there anyone who wishes to oppose the city budget? Since there is none, well then there is no rebuttal. So I will hereby close this hearing and will now deliberate and make our decision as far as the budget goes.
The deliberation of passing will be in the action item section and that will be done by the resolutions.
Oh, okay. So I just closed the budget hearing and we do one and the resolution that we do will do that. So we don't do this like because we were in it. No, that was one of these days I'll get that since we do don't see here. Financial report. Ending April 30th, 2022.
Yes, thank you. In your financial report, you will see, I will draw your attention down to the lower left where I list the interest rates. Some of our interest rates, specifically the ones with the state treasury have come up at point 10%. And they again, and they will go through their point 10%. So we are starting to see slight increases in that move of interest going forward. I don't start defining your packet. It's so big.
It's great.
If you can look under this special hearings, it might be very last.
Okay. We. This is more than a month over, but we are on track. We don't have any planned contingency moves as of now, so I don't have anything out of the ordinary in the month of April. And then just for a heads up, in June, we will have our geo bond payment. So you're going to see a large amount of money being moved out when we make the principal plus interest payment on our geo bond.
Does anybody have any questions about the financial report? Having hearing then, we'll move right on to our part that is pretty exciting tonight. We have some prearranged presentation. We have Sam Ormond Elementary, who was going to do a school presentation. Pretty exciting. I'll probably let Melissa Kiefer, who you know is my wife, should probably be the one to introduce and explain what. They're all third graders, right? How about just bring right up here and then you can face the audience.
All right. Hello, my name is Melissa Kiefer and I am the Sam Ormond Elementary Tag Coordinator. And tag means talented and gifted, so these kids are talented and gifted. I'm going to let them do the presentation by themselves and I'll, you know, help them every once in a while. Where you have to give me time. Are you getting nervous? This is why we're here presenting, because it is scary. Okay. We got it. We got it. All right, here we go. Do you want me to hold it?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll help. All right. So to be in tag.
To be in tag, you have to be talented and gifted?
Maybe. Yes, maybe. So how did you get that? How did you? Well, tell first of all about the math contest. She did. Our school got the, it was the district math contest and Harper got first place. Who got second?
Mine. No, Isaac.
Isaac's not here. He got second and then. And who was fourth? You were fourth? So we had three of the top four kids in the district and Harper was in first place. So tell them about the iReady scores that you have to have.
You have to have mine.
She did so much better out there. She's really nervous. All right, so we have a scores from our math, our math. iReady scores is our program that we use. Oh, Mr. The mayor is the tag coordinator for Windy River. So we kind of have worked together on these things, but so for iReady scores, I picked the top five kids from reading and math to be in our tag program. And these are some of them that actually got to be here. So tell them about some of the things that we did this year.
This year at at tag in Sam Ormond Elementary, we have went to the Sage Center. We saw, we got to see a drone fly. We got to drive robots, sphere robots. And we also got to do virtual reality. And the second place we went to was.
The high school.
The Riverside. And we got to learn about animals.
Those are just some of the things that we did this year. One of them that we didn't get to at school, because this is after school program. So one of the things we didn't get to was something I really wanted to do and it was a pamphlet about the City of Ormond. And I said, okay, kids, let's, let's just forget about it. We don't have time. Some of the kids said, but I've already started. Like you started. Where'd you start? Well, I did it at home. Like, all right, if you want to do it at home, then go ahead and do it at home and this will be just a home project. You don't have to do it, but they all were so excited about it. And I said, okay, we're going to go to the city council meeting and you're going to present. So here they are to present their pamphlets on the City of Ormond.
My name is Harper Bex and I'm here to present my pamphlet on the City of Ormond. The population is 300 eight, 3,800 people. Ormond is located in Oregon. Ormond is a wonderful town. The teachers are nice, the community is nice, the schools are fantastic. Our mayor is Mr. Kiefer. Mr. Kiefer is also sixth grade teacher. A day in Ormond. Breakfast at the Sunrise Cafe. Go swimming at the Ormond Pool. Eat lunch at the Two Barrows Top House. Eat a hamburger. Go to the splash pad or go to the library. Have dinner at Bert Field's and order the Hawaiian pizza. The parents' family favorite things about Ormond. Mom, swimming at the pool. Dad, Burton Fields Berry. Me, the library. Callum, the farms, Annie, the park. Yeah. You have any questions?
Any questions for her? Good job.
Hello, my name is Ryan Sanders and today we're, I'm going to tell you a few things about Ormond, Oregon. And first of all, I am a third grade student in Sam Ormond Elementary. Let's get on with the pantry. I'm going to tell you a few things about Ormond, Oregon. We will talk about where it's located, history and things to do here. Ormond is located in Eastern Oregon. It is in Monroe County, right off Interstate 84. Ormond sits along the Columbia River. Ormond was first homesteaded in 1903. Senior Herbert Ormond founded our school is named after him. Ormond is small but has a lot of things to do. There is fishing, golfing and disc golf. We have many fun buildings like the Sage Center and Red Center. We have a lot of parks to play at. I really like Ormond. It's an awesome town. Questions?
Come on. Ready to answer it? So where did you get your information about Ormond?
Um. I looked on newspapers, so um, I looked up if I really, really didn't know and yeah.
You can work with the chamber director. That's what it is. I see that.
My name is Yvonne. And here today I'm going to I'm going tell you some facts about Ormond. The City of Ormond is a small town along the Columbia River, just off of Interstate 84. May is populated by population is 3,564 as of 2020. But this provides stations, that turns the street, that dead pipe, all women, tunnel break, stair break, moon break. Walking red path. Disc golf, eagle, swimming, fast bowling, there, swimming at the, like a fifty. All of these sources. The pantry, we, we will, going, dairy, levy, city hall, police department. On the river, home, on the river, fantasy, noise, fantasy, center of us, show of us. Navy Center, senior center, ice hybrid, package space, NAPAs, other parts, baby, bank. And I think you should all go make tighter, winter, dentist. Places to worship. Baptist church. Baptist church, community church, LDS church. Places to eat, CND, driving, coffee, pizza, that field, and pizza. Like those maximum, the maximum group. The village, the sunrise cafe, sampling, quiet, uh, student, the village, college, the food truck, hard. Places to stay, the night, even, uh, this breakfast value, over again, living, college, need to learn, level. Yeah, I do think, just like, I do think. High school, when you went to elementary, um, Ormond Elementary. It's the OCTC. Only there's childcare, E and C college. You have any questions?
So what did you learn about Ormond when you did that your project?
Ormond is small, but it had like a lot of places they can go.
What would you like to see in Ormond? Of the new, what's on the new you like to see? You think you have it all then?
My name is Jonathan Burne and I'm a third grade tech student. Things I like about Ormond, nice place to, lots, lots of parks, grass areas. Our mayor, mayor is nice too. It is a clean town, no trash line around or or abandoned buildings. Halloween is fun here. Many stops. It's many stops. Provided by the city, same with Easter, fun and games and fantastic kids. In the summer, keeping kids busy and helps parents a lot too. History, Sam Ormond, founded Ormond in 1903. We got moved back two times towards attraction, RV parks, rock climbing, swimming and hotels. Any questions?
What do you like best here in Ormond?
The parks.
Good job. Do you like fantastic kids?
I'm Linda and I'm going to talk about Ormond. A small town with a big heart. About my town. Ormond sits on the Columbia River, that's where I was. Our slogan is on the river, on the way. We're a small community of 3,020,000 people who help each other. For them. Well, of our town. The Marina Park. The Marina Park is a place where you can make wonderful memories with your family and friends. You can play in the cycle, go for a run, go swimming, fishing, and many more things to do here. If you walk a bit more, you can sit on a bench and watch the sunset and the gentle wind and feel it. Each center. If you want to learn more about the agriculture and and industrial development and movement, a fun way to do it, which is the sustainable agriculture and energy center. And here you will watch a potato turn into a fry. You can also learn how to drive a tractor and line a tractor, local cow. Back center. And if you like swimming, rock climbing, exercising, stop by the rec center and all of those in one big building. Plan B. Enjoy delicious noodles made with special ingredients provided by our local farmers. To lunch at some of the restaurants for pizza lovers, try Bert Field. All right. And I promise you won't be disappointed. For burger lovers, we have CND, a traditional restaurant in LA town. And for friendly breakfasts, stop by the Sunday night at Ormond Cafe. You have any questions?
What's your favorite bird on the safe side?
Hey, the potatoes turn into a curry fry.
Don't you think they should have those curry fries when you eat them? I just taste dust. All right. Does anybody have any questions for any of the kids? No? All right. Well, guys, let me know.
All right, so this is pretty scary. I can only imagine how hard it is as a third grader to get and talk, be able to come up and talk to adults in front of everybody, especially at a city council meeting. So, good job. Good job. Come on, you did a very good job. Good job.
We'd like to leave the pamphlet with you guys so you can look at them and then we'll leave it for Mr. Kiefer to push back so that you can have it.
Good job. Good job. Oh, very good. Really proud of you. So that's the real cool part that I think is really neat about this is to be able to see our young kids be able to grow and progress because they're only young for so long and it's just super cool to see them to do that. So moving on, we'll go right to our next one, which is an introduction of a scholarship recipient. So Mike Lees and Anderson Perry and Associates gave him a thousand dollar scholarship award and it went to Andrew Brennan at the high school, for Riverside High School. And he already received it, correct?
Yes.
And I just wanted to let the council know that again, that award was given to Andrew Brennan. Is there any comments or questions about this, the last six achievement scholarship? Because you gave one last year too. Well, you probably do them every year, but I remember last year because I was here. You don't remember when that started?
Uh, we started it a couple years ago.
A couple years ago?
Yeah, one hundred G came up.
All right, so we'll move to Mr. McIntyre, the City Hall Expansion Project Information.
Well, it's pretty much the same as last time. Yeah, just trying to. Just look at it from the outside first. There it is. There. So this is the addition here. It will have its own entrance, but it will have a naked like corridor between the existing office and the new office. So I'm gonna see this or not, but this is pretty much the stamp of it. This area right here and then these three offices will be altered just to accommodate that corridor.
Mayor, can you?
Okay. Right, just point out to the room, staff, and train and outlast, so keep and see in here. So this is the planning of this office. This is where my office is, this is, Janice, our office. So like room for this, these two offices are going to get shrunk down a little bit. And the city management office has a very little thing, it's a little way. Quarter door, nice white portal, got your staff down, no vegetable coming in, waiting area, counter.
We said that.
This is the working area, copier, plotter, print tech, this is my office. Here you film it, figure it out. And this area will be for future inspectors. We'll just put cubicles in there. We'll just put cubicles in there. This is, this is. A hundred percent plan, except we asked them to make a small change. And basically we could push it out four more feet. Four more feet, so we get. There's this work room back. Creating. A work area right there.
And that big room off to the bottom left, I guess, is for the work for additional employees here.
That office room? One of these things in there, of course. Pop here.
Peter, it appears that the building manager's office is completely larger than the city manager's office.
Yeah, I use in.
We know who's important here.
Ultimately, it keep on. The city manager office is two hundred ninety three square feet. That office will be.
With the additional four feet extension?
Yeah, right here, as the plan here is hundred and six.
But as if you're here very often, you see that we're just. Starting to brush with the seams and like you say, we know that we need to hire. Uh, at least a planner to take Parless Place permit, so. And, and when you get to the packet, maybe I'll. I want you to notice how many permits we sold this last month again. Because a lot of times a permit like for a house isn't just a house permit, you know. With that goes the, you know, electrical and all of those, so. It's, it's time consuming to say the least. There's four permits to go to house. Yeah, but we're careful plumbing structure. And where you all have to set. Cause I think eighty-two is the number in this month in your packet. So. It's, it's. There's times in Boardman where I can't.
Is there an expected time that the building inspections room with the cubicles, that the city will start filling and? I would give those rules.
I would say about three years. I have, I have a person that I'm training right now. So, I'm a person on probably the time. Two or three years.
It's already a fine inspector that will definitely have a guy like that.
I'll send you that.
He works maybe ten hours a week.
Yeah, that, that space there is going to start shrinking now. That's okay, no, no, your office, it's going to be empty.
Yeah, I know, I've cracked. But yeah, Ken, Ken says I, instead of working, I cannot get a commercial plum inspector certification. Has to be a law. And so he retired just like last year, reached out to me and said, hey, is that going to work? And he didn't realize that it was really hard for three months to find. So, who got the one? Do you work for them? Up to Eric, there was one.
Your questions?
Let's see, expected completion date on this?
Well, probably February-ish, twenty-three. This. They can not change.
Have you? Had contingency funds aside for the rising cost of materials, labor?
Yes.
Our situation financially for the U S and the world. Possibly double, maybe even travel before it's completed.
It could run, and she'll just do. Yeah, part, uh, harder to make sure that we have.
So if we don't, we don't work out.
See how that works.
All right, his office will shrink again.
Did you say February twenty twenty-three?
Probably.
Start date? Do you have an estimated start date?
Or is? It was a federal problem? Was set for July, but this change pushed us back to April.
And our proposed budget for our main amount for the add-on is how much?
About three point three million. That includes furniture.
Yes, everything, the computers, furniture, generators, everything.
Oh yeah. You're not having coffee makers like the fly on Air Force One that run ten or fifteen thousand dollars for coffee?
I was looking at the last year about eight.
Oh.
No, it'll just be different. So, uh, well. This budget does include a full building generator. I thought I had a view of the whole site, but I don't have it here. The generators will go back in the grassy area off the backside of the parking lot. Between.
Actually, Bill, no.
No, it's going to go right off the parking lot, just to the left of the police cell.
This is a good time. I don't know, we've always, we need a generator for this building. Because if there should ever be a national disaster that we really had to respond to. The fire department is, is the people that will do the work. And here will be the command center. And you can't command much if you don't have. And so, uh, this was kind of a good time to get a generator. And so that the whole building has some power while we're. All the mayors out there in the front, they're saying everything's under control.
Here's the same thing for the public.
Because I want to talk some more about generators because. No, it's getting standard because I'm not. But, you know, in, in our new expansion too, we will have a generator, we have generator. But water building and stuff, but there's places in our community that we have generators so that if we have a fail. On our filter, that we can, you know, still have water sewer capacity for. A certain day, you know, so anyway, okay, go on. I'm done with my generators each.
Yeah, those generators keep the sewer going.
Yes, that's the part of it.
These are, this generator will just keep this building fired up. And a lot of times with the generator in the building, you don't really want to fire up the whole building. But this portion is already wired, so. You have a choice.
Do you have any other questions? All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, Mike Lees with Anderson Perry.
Good evening, everybody. We gotta get set up real quick. All right, so. All right, so, uh, good evening, council and mayor. Tonight's presentation is going to provide information on the domestic drinking water system. The domestic wastewater system and a brief. Tip-in on the city's development code and street wits and then I'll provide a. Construction project overview at the end, so. Uh, just a little background about myself, I've been working with the city of Boardman for the last seven years on. Water wastewater transportation projects. Uh, planning documents and assisting the Public Works Director with regulatory compliance. With D Q and Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Services. So the first topic this evening, I want to talk about the domestic water system and. First off, uh, explain sort of the realm in which we work in and that. Is, uh, basically the regulatory realm and the regulatory agency that oversees the drinking water system. And for that matter, any public water drinking system is the Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Services. So they are, their role is to administer and enforce drinking water quality standards and. Uh, ensure public. Health standards are met and. Make sure everybody's doing what they need to do right, so. Following here is some, some definitions, um, straight out of the Oregon administrative rules. And I'm not going to go over them. Read them verbatim, but I will reference them. As I, I get start to talk about the. The city's drinking water source and the reason we're talking about the city's drinking water source is the. The, the topic, the hot topic right now is the nitrate levels within groundwater. Uh, specifically in the Lower Yumitella Basin groundwater management area. So, the reason I want to talk about the city's source water is because. Even though by statute it is considered a well, by Oregon law, it is a well. Uh, and they follow the Oregon laws when installing a collector well. So, uh, the next page. Is a graphic on, on really what a collector well looks like and. Yes, this is not the city of Boardman's collector wells, but it is a good graphical representation. Of what a collector well looks like, it's got a pump house, it sits on top of a caisson. Uh, there's two suction pipes that pull water from within the caisson. And the caisson itself sits on bedrock. Now, at the, at the base of the caisson, there are lateral springs that go out somewhat like a spoke on a wheel. Or spokes on a wheel. And, uh, what those do is they protrude out into the alubio aquifer. And, and that's where the water comes from that goes into the caisson. So, the reason I wanted to show this graphical representation is because of two things. One, you can see that there is the river and this is, it's a Columbia River. And then you have groundwater coming in, so there is an interface. Between the water that goes into the, the collect, into the caisson. Uh, and there are studies performed that when the caisson or when the house are pumping. Approximately eight percent of the water that is going into that caisson is coming from the river. The other twenty percent is the groundwater. So, the important part here and the, the really interesting thing about. Collector wells is that you have bank filtration. So what bank filtration is, it's a, it's basically a natural filter. Um, so when water is being pumped, uh, just like in a regular well, it is pulling water. From the alubium. And, and what that does is basically increases the water velocity through the alubium. Uh, and while it's doing that, it's naturally filtering the water. So. That's, that's in a nutshell what the, the. The drinking water source is for the city of Boardman. Going back up a page, I just wanted to touch on this last piece, which is. Oregon Administrative Rule thirty-three, three thirty-three, oh sixty-one, zero, zero, three, zero, which indicates that. The M C L for nitrates in a community's drinking water system is ten milligrams per liter. So what triggers a groundwater management area is a, a hit of seven milligrams per liter. So. This following table shows the historic testing results for nitrate in the city's drinking water. Between two thousand and three and twenty, April of twenty twenty-two. So. Back in two thousand and three, there was a hit of seven point five. But it's consistently been below five until recently, it's been around, there was two hits around five. I think it was five point one seven, five point two three. So, the city's been consistently below, below the M C L for nitrates and. There is an obligation. As a municipality to provide safe drinking water to the public. And if at any point in time, that is not being. It's not happening, uh, you know, the city has obligations by Oregon law to notify the public. That it is not safe. And up until this point, that has not happened, so. Absolutely. So any questions? Council. On the drinking water service?
So, on, on the spikes that we're seeing in the last few years, is that something we need to concern that's going to continue to grow or? Is that just?
The best thing you can do is, you know, continue to track it and test it. And if they are reaching to levels such as like the, the groundwater management. Trigger, which is seven milligrams per liter, there, that will be notified, notifications that go out and those notifications are required by Oregon law. For the, the public drinking water system to distribute to its, its users. So. At this point in time. That's not necessary, but that city's going to continue to test as required by law. And, and make all, all these results are public record, so. There's nothing that I presented here that is not available to the public.
So, my, uh, where are these tests taken place? Is that kind of an hour? Where, where, where do we find those?
The tests are collected from the water building. So, the, the, the water tests are basically representative of. The water that is going out into the distribution system.
So is that water that is those, is that water that's in my house?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious because, um. I was just curious.
Do you see any cause or trend in the spikes here in the last few years? Is that a seasonality thing or is there any correlation between when we have a spike and a drop?
It's difficult and it's, it's hard to fit a trend line to the data. Being that you do have rises and falls. If it was consistently rising, that would be. One thing, but it's hard to fit a trend line on data that's going like this. Basically, your trend line would be. Mathematically, if you were to fit a trend line to this data, it would. You know, you can kind of just draw a line through here and that would be your trend line.
Are those dots then representative of an individual test? And or are there multiple tests being taken between those periods of high and low?
By this, so the city's required to test quarterly at the moment, I believe. Uh, so, those are quarterly samples.
So, so. We're done, we can't have questions for you now.
This is the perfect time.
Oh, I totally get that.
Because she's hitting a very great point when it comes to outflow of water. And I asked at the bond questions about how much water the city is using and I was never answered those questions.
We're not home there. This is, this is.
Transparency issue. This is transparency issue.
There is also, there is a public comment.
And I and I.
Yeah, your public comment was on the indoor closures.
Yeah, transparency issues with.
It says people are closing, we're not going to go there, but anyways.
Uh, yeah, let's follow the rules. Trap word, hey, everywhere.
Is there any other, is there any questions before Mike please keep going?
I do have a question. Yes, um, with uh the spikes. Can you attribute that to a potential um or like spring planting and and. The the nitrates being uh leached into the water? Is that a possibility from from uh farmers and those that fertilize the fields? That's a subjective question. And so your best guess, well, I'm here to be objective and present the data that that I have. So when you start talking about what's going on outside of Oregon, I. I don't have any comment on that because. I'm here to talk about what's going on in the city of Oregon's drinking water system. So you're talking about activities that are going on outside of Oregon. And, you know, we're here to talk about the city of Oregon's drinking water system.
Okay, so in to recreate my question then. The water that you test, where does it come from?
Uh, it comes from the collector wells. Right, so.
Okay, the water that goes into the collector wells, where does that water come from?
So there are studies that have been performed that show that approximately eight percent of the water comes from the river. And twenty percent comes from groundwater. So another thing to note about the city's water rights is there are surface water rights from the Columbia River.
Mike, just to confirm, you said eighty percent, but eighty percent.
Eighty percent, eighty percent from the river, twenty percent from groundwater. So and that is when the collector well is pumping, when they, when the collector well stops pumping. It's static and and basically the. The what, the the alubio aquifer returns to static levels. So when it is pumping, there's a coded depression that occurs, basically that the the alubio offer. Has a depression in it because it's having water sucked out of it. Uh, but uh. When the pump stops, it becomes static and the water cools down, so. But the studies show approximately eighty percent comes from the river. And twenty percent from the groundwater.
So my concern is. The the spikes up, down, up, down, up, down, that's, that's kind of weird to me. That we be up, down, up, down, up, down, so if our trend continues to go up, down, up, down, up, down. As a city, what would be our. Recommendations in order to combat that up, down, up, downtrend? In order not to have it, but we want to obviously keep it lower, so if our goal is to keep it below five. What would we as a city need to do with our water?
Well. The.
Their mitigation things that we can do?
Basically, in order to treat nitrates, it's a filtration system. So current, the current treatment system. With in the city of Oregon's water system doesn't require filtration. Because it needs groundwater quality standards.
For Oregon?
Yes.
So if we wanted to go above beyond the standards that Oregon set. Then we could add a bill, add additional filters to our water that would go to our public?
Basically, yes.
Basically, I mean, that would be the thought process, how that would happen. Somebody smarter than me would do that.
There were basically, there's a lot of of engineering analysis that would go into to select the best uh treatment system. For the city of Oregon's system, I mean filtration is one option, there are other options, but there are many factors that go in. Go into the decision-making process to determine what the the best fit would be to treat the nitrates.
Because obviously keeping the city water is. Sure is not the right word, but as good as we can keep it is obviously the goal of any city. And so the the bouncing back and forth is kind of, is kind of interesting a little bit, but. If it was to start continuously bounce back and forth and go up, trying to figure out. How we combat that and make sure that we keep it at a lower level. So obviously we track it because it started spiking uh after two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. So.
Mayor Kiefer, can I ask a question?
Yes, ready?
Um, I I'm curious, um, Mike, if you can tell me when we get to that um level that is. Target to stay below for the state, which is at seven. Um, when we get there, what uh tools? Or equipment or materials would we use to bring that number back into a safe level? I know that the safe level target is to stay below ten, but we have that. Alert at seven, so what would we do at that point to bring it back? Down to the fives and threes and the ones?
Just like I I mentioned earlier, the there would have to be analysis done to basically. Select the best treatment option for the city of Oregon's system.
Yes, how long would that process take? If if we were above ten, we need to do something right away. And and you're saying an analysis, how long does that process take? So we're going to have water that's unacceptable given. Uh, by the state standards and it takes a couple of months to do an analysis. What would we as a city do in the interim for uh providing safe water?
There'd be notifications that go out to the the users of the public water system and and we would. Basically start with our analysis and. See what we need to do.
That'd be like when Portland has their water system or those. A water that's flooded or whatever, so they give out notices that says their water has reached this level and they give recommendations of what they can and can't do. That would be kind of that type of notification.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately, you can't. Or.
Absolutely, um, you were saying the dots, if I heard correctly, were the times the city is tested, so the thought that is after. We're two, six, eighteen, twenty five. Uh, to the one right before and one right before that, I. I might just so that you don't have all the results for our tests, but I would be curious to know. What information caused that huge leap? If that's possible for us to. Some point maybe the council see that information is after that point, it doesn't go down as well, I see. Feel like everyone sees that and sees after that point as a slow rise and. Obviously everyone's attentive to how we can bring that down, but if there's some some information within that test where it jumps up. That maybe we should be mindful of, that we should look at is why we now have the net short stem consistently on here.
This is the information that I have at this time, I know Kevin took another test recently, so. As that data becomes available. Council, you will look for that.
But you said it's already public knowledge on the results.
Yeah, you can go onto Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Services and look at all the test results for. Any water system within the state.
Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Services. And then from there, would I just um. Search my. I do both, both of those matter, I appreciate it. We guys would like to see those results, and if it's already there, public knowledge and the information, I'm curious about if we would be able to probably.
Well, I think it's my opinion that we need to start addressing uh due to the topic of what's going on as far as the port and the county. Issues of groundwater that we need to. Start doing an analysis of. Our drinking water and how to make sure we keep it safe, that's what the analysis does. I think it's important, so I don't think we should start when we get to six, seven. I think we should have a target of saying our goal is to keep it below five or around five or lower. And not have it continue to spike, I I think now's the time to act, try to figure out what we can do as mitigation. Where the citizens are born and that's what I think is still.
I agree.
Time to start figuring out what's going on and what we can do to make sure that our drinking water ordinance. Is what we want it to be. Better than the state. Correct. So is that something we can do? Do we just have to suggest that to you or just?
No, I think if if you want, I think that, I think you should be proud. That we have kept our water under five and and we try hard to keep it under seven. And that is, that is a state rule.
Correct.
I, I'm not, I'm not a water guru person, but I do know that like in Hurston, they have. Uh, some kind of filtration center with blue lights that they send it over, we're talking millions of dollars. I mean, millions. They have other kind of filter systems, so and and Mike would be happy to to bring you some kind of a. A report that shows you some options, what it costs, these other accounts are doing to make sure they fill the water, but this is not. If you think the three million we're spending now on on doing the caisson and getting more water to. Provide for growth. These are expensive, these are expensive and 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 if you can either send water safe to drink. And ours is, I mean, we're not close to the. Being shut down, I mean, we worked really hard to keep our water adjusted so that we can stay at five, but I'm sure Mike would. I mean, we can do that, so if you have an idea, because I do agree that you can't wait until the day. It hits some figure and then go, oh my God, we don't even, I mean. Even if we had a plan, you can't go out and just boot one of these in overnight, I mean, we all see how long it's taken us. To do our bond project for crying out loud, so.
Right, and that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is. If we start planning. On what we have and keep it what we have.
Correct.
That's where, because the nitrates are only going to get worse. Because of what we have, we have agriculture, we have all that, my concern is in the last seven tests. Only two were down, the rest are all above five. That's concerns.
It should concern you if they were seven, for sure.
Yes. I mean, I like the idea that we're at five, but. I still think we need to start thinking about, and I'm not the one, and and as far as being the mayor, I. I'm not going to build some just. Not even not build something because it's too expensive.
No.
And I'm not, I'm sure that's not what you meant.
No.
And.
But you need to know the price of the difference between what system you would choose to.
Correct, correct.
And and like you say, waiting until the last minute would be pound foolish, for sure.
Absolutely. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I'll make note of the time and the age and I have some to cover. If this relates to any more to percentage issue.
Lots more.
Okay.
Yeah, you still have those active sessions.
So. Continuing on, uh, I'm going to talk briefly about the the domestic wastewater system. Uh, there's been concerns expressed, so uh first off, the regulatory agency overseeing the wastewater system is a department of our environmental quality. So in March for, March fourth, two thousand twenty twenty, uh, the DEQ updated the city's water pollution control facility permit. Um, the WPCF permit, water pollution control facility permit. Uh, assigns the wastewater discharge limits, hydraulics, uh, and nutrient loading rates, um. Leaking rates, groundwater protection and provides uh compliance schedules. So the new WPCF permit required in part that the city perform a sludge survey, lagoon number one, retest the lagoons. Uh, submit a groundwater monitoring plan and update the recycled water use plan. Uh, currently the city is in full compliance with the WTCF permit. So getting on to the uh the sludge survey, the results of the sludge sludge survey. Uh, it was determined that, you know, well, backing up, the lagoon number one has been collecting solids since installation in nineteen seventy nine. So the sludge survey basically just measured how much accumulated solids are within that lagoon. And the results of that study showed that it needs to be, needs to have the solid removed, so. We're currently constructing lagoon number four and once lagoon number four is operational, lagoon number one will go offline. And the sludge, sludge will be removed and uh disposed of in a lander, in a approved landfill. So that's the long and short of the sludge survey. So the leak test, uh, the leak test estimated that lagoon number one, so I'll back up, give a brief description of what a leak test is. It's a measurement of the ins and outs of the lagoon, so you have ins are influence from the city precipitation. And then the outs would be evaporation and what you irrigate. So the summation of that. Basically a water balance and um. All three lagoons were tested and it was approximated that. That lagoon number one was seeping approximately point one four two inches per day and. Lagoon number two was seeping approximately point zero eight four inches per day. Lagoon number three was showing lots of seeping at all. Couple important things to note is that when lagoon one, two were constructed in nineteen seventy nine. The allowable seepage rate in Oregon was no more than point two five inches per day. And. The guidance document in which we use to, that basically sets the rules for performing a leak test. Um, says in priority areas, any rate of seepage greater than zero may warrant direct sampling. And monitoring of groundwater. And the city is currently doing that part and monitoring the groundwater. Seepage rate of zero point one two five inches per day or less is normal. However, this low rate can cause groundwater contamination where lagoon contents are strong. And background levels are high quality, when they say background levels, they're talking about the groundwater. You know, high quality. Seepage exceeding point two five inches per day indicates a seal failure or absence of adequate initial seal, so. If you have more than point two five, then you need to put in a new liner for your lagoon. So the city, the lagoon nitrate concentrations are low. Uh, the average nitrate concentrations for the last three years is point seven eight seven milligrams per liter.
Super low.
Point seven eight seven. So in the background, groundwater nitrate concentrations are of average, so this is the WAMA action. WAMA action plan, which shows a number of monitoring wells throughout the area and, but it also shows us there are large discrepancies throughout the area with high nitrates in some wells, low nitrates in some wells. Um, and again, it's hard to fit a trend line. I'm an engineer and I like trends, but with this kind of data, it's hard to fit a trend line to that data. So. This is the second action. So any questions on, on that real quick? I'm gonna, I have a lot more to go over on the wastewater. So the groundwater monitoring plan in uh November of twenty twenty one, the city installed three groundwater monitoring wells. Two of them upgrading, well, two upgrading wells, one is upgrading a circle fifty two, the other upgrading of the lagoons. And the other two are downgrading of those, so just to give you guys a reference. Here's lagoons, up gradient, down gradient wells, circle fifty two. Up gradient and down gradient. So. As a part of the groundwater monitoring plans, you require to test those pool samples from those wells quarterly. And here are the test results right here. So down gradient of lagoon thirty three, thirty five milligrams per liter for nitrate. Up gradient of the lagoon forty three, forty four, thirty nine. Down gradient of fifty two in the forties, thirty eights, thirty seven. And upgrading of fifty two is uh in the sixes. So. One thing to note on that is the upgrading well is adjacent to the canal. And there is seepage from the canal that is believed to be influencing the nitrate levels within that upgraded monitor. But the moral of the story is, you know, the city is continuing to monitor the the groundwater monitoring wells to see if there's any sort of contamination that could be coming from the lagoons or the land application practices at circle fifty two. Um, the results of these samples are sent to DEQ and they have a a huge database that they're comparing. You know, the information of groundwater throughout the entire network, so. So, going going on, uh trying to talk about the city's recycle water use plan. This is recycle water use plan relates to the water that's applied at circle fifty two, and that is basically directly. It comes out of Lagoon Number Three after the treatment process and is land applied at circle fifty two. Uh, the recycle water use plan cites the nutrient loading rates, so how much nutrients can go on the circle, which is nitrates. Organic nitrogen, ammonia, et cetera. Um, and best management, best agricultural management practices are used to determine the nitrogen loading rates to achieve crop yield goals. Uh, and and also to minimize nitrate loss to the groundwater, so the intent is to spray enough nitrogen on the the crops, so the crop consumes all of it. Uh, it also, the the recycle water use plan also identifies the the crop loading rates, so different crops consume different amounts of nitrogen. So in circle fifty two, they grow alfalfa and the nitrogen loading rate for alfalfa is four hundred and twenty pounds per acre per year. So best management practices identify that number as the amount of nitrogen alfalfa can consume during the year. So this table right here shows the amount of nitrogen that has been applied on circle fifty two from the city's wastewater, recycled water. Uh, hundred twenty two, hundred twenty two pounds per acre, thirty pounds per acre, and sixty four pounds per acre. What that basically means is, so here's your maximum allowable nitrate loading rate at four hundred and twenty. And here's what the city is applying to circle fifty two. So, a general discussion on the wastewater, so wastewater coming into Lagoon Number One. And it contains organic nitrogen and ammonia. Okay, it's also known as total gelatol nitrogen. So. To move on, so there's the plant available nitrogen, and that is what a plant consumes. So they, there is a chemical equation that comes up with how you determine plant available nitrogen. Okay, I'm not going to get into that, but in order to to determine what that plant available nitrogen is, the city collects samples on the water that they apply on circle fifty two. So that water is representative of the water in the lagoons, and that's also what's applied on circle fifty two. So the results of that include tests for TKN, total gelatol nitrogen and nitrates and nitrates. And I previously mentioned the nitrate level of the land application recycled water was point seven eight seven, so it's a pretty low concentration of nitrogen, and then nitrogen that is applied to circle fifty two, the uh the alfalfa uses that to grow. So. Are there any questions on that?
We're just, yeah. We're we're being a little state, what the state is asking us to be.
Well. Bubble up what the state. Um, the wastewater system is in compliance with all permits.
So we submit those reports to the state.
Absolutely, yeah, to DEQ. So if there are no further questions, I'll move on to city development code street sections. So. Uh, it's important to note that the city's development code uh identifies street right of ways and improvements as shown in the table, which is an excerpt out of the development code. Um, so when you think about uh development code, that is somewhat of a law thou shalt. Okay, um, there's also other documents that support or provide guidance for the development code, which would be the transportation system plan or other documents such as IMP. So if if there's questions on right away with or uh road bits, then then we refer to the development code. Okay, lastly, uh I'd like to talk about the construction. There's a few construction projects going on. Uh, the first one I want to talk about is Laurel Lane and Loop Road. Uh, right now, currently, the sewer mainline is installed and the their the contractor is just finishing up the sewer service connections, um so they're almost done with the whole sewer. I think they might be done today. And the sewer crew is both demobilizing, and now it's just the road crew, so the Devon Loop Road is um is two grade and ninety percent of the rock is is there, so it is you know, the right of the road, and it actually is the detour currently for um Gates is currently closed at the moment because they're preparing that, basically the the east side of of Gates. They're they're getting that prepared for rock and grade. Um, one thing to talk about on the sewer installation, and I'd like to show you a couple things of which was the original design. So the original design had us coming basically straight through the I four underpass interchange and have a manhole basically right in the middle of the intersection that would serve both the east and west side. Well, we ran into um basically something that was unforeseen, which was about a truckload of concrete um encasing a bunch of existing pipes. So that prevented us from installing the sewer pipe as shown. And we didn't know that was there during the design because it was buried and but locates, when we relocate, it doesn't identify huge masses of concrete. Um, so the design changed to look like it is here. So to avoid the huge mass of concrete, we crossed the road and extended up to uh the original alignment, the east-west alignment on on the Yates. And stubbed across the road here and, you know, continued on to the end of Yates, so the original plan was to have three road closures, one, two, basically, the contractor. Well, let me back up a little bit. There was an existing sleeve in the uh I four interchange that was dedicated for the city sewer. That was installed, I think, in the eights. Um, so the city was able to utilize that sleeve and save uh tremendous amounts of money and time on the project. Uh, it's about a thousand feet of sewer that they were able, the the contractor just shoved through that sleeve. Um, from the, from the the end of the sleeve, we had to uh go across the road, so we had a road closure from about eight o'clock in the morning till eleven o'clock in the morning. The first road closure was to push that whole pipe, south thousand feet of pipe. Uh, the next road closure was a full day road closure to install sewer over to the east side of um Laurel Lane. And then you had one more road closure to get the sewer stub across to the west side of Laurel Lane. And uh and then that that was a full day road closure as well. And then the last road road closure was to pass the asphalt. And that was between twelve and four P M. So the contractor did a great job in accommodating the changes in the design and getting this done expeditiously.
I asked Mike to show you that because there's been a lot of, and you might know that uh we were holding the, we were stopping traffic unnecessarily and closing businesses and stuff, and I, construction is construction. You lay out your best plan, like you say, we thought we were going straight, we knew we had that pipe under the freeway that we were hoping to hit and go, but that didn't turn out that way. So you go to Plan B, and then all of a sudden you're Plan C. But it doesn't mean that you're not truthful, and it doesn't mean that you haven't done your due diligence in designing a project. I think the people that have worked on this project have worked very hard to try to be considerate of the people that live in that area because it's been difficult and and it's just, that's just how life is.
Yeah, the hard part's over. Um, yeah, the sewer was very difficult. And then typically you install sewer first when you go to put in a utility because it's it's the deepest utility. In your session, it was twelve V D, twelve to fourteen V D. So uh because it was the last utility to go in, you were combating fiber optic lines, power lines, water lines, irrigation lines, cell phone lines. So it was, it was not an easy installation, but it is done, so it is essentially ready for and the uh the stub on the west side is ready for when the west side goes. And there there won't have to be any other road closures. It's all sewer on Laurel Lane because the west side wells will be able to spill very. So wastewater project real quick, uh this can be probably one they're they're moving there. Uh, they're building a lagoon right now and waiting for materials to show up for the lift stations. So they've got some big scrapers out there. They do their watering, do their watering, exactly. Not too interesting, but uh the water system improvement, uh collector well phase one. The collector well itself, phase one of the project. Uh, began last week, so the contractors constructing the road down into the collector well, and they're gonna be in in a couple of weeks to drill some monitoring wells. And actual case on construction should begin in July, so that's anticipated to be released uh in February twenty three. And then that kind of moves into a phase two project, which moves from station and the the, you know, reservoir. So we're still working on the design and anticipating ending that project in August of this.
The road down to the collector's tree is at the Sailboard Beach, so because when I was driving around to find the water tree, I guess I never paid any attention that it was gonna be like all at the side of Sailboard Beach, so you'd have to go and go down and search.
Groundwater.
It's right through the whole one.
Through the whole one.
Right through the whole one. I wonder if we end up in the whole one, though.
You know.
Back to the.
That's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Thanks. Any questions for council regarding the presentation?
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Mike. Okay. We'll move on to our next piece of attendance to public comment. Interested audience who are going to be invited, or maybe are invited to provide comments, this time is set aside for persons wishing to address the council. Um, there is not only intended, anyone may see no new copy other than a matter of litigation. If it was a judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. I think the mayor made a comment, said three minutes for persons who are told thirty minutes. Those people who wish to complete a request to speed car prior to the meeting, and they turned it into the city reporter, I have those. Speeders may not yield their time to others. Yeah, I think that is. Note, an action will not be taken at the speed to citizen comments. Council, however, after hearing from interested citizens, may place items under new business on a future agenda. So proper notice may be given to all interested parties. So we'll just go off with the first one, I think. The first one was the chamber.
Um, I have a, we have a date, just due to time or strange, just really want to give a date today regarding the Fort June I V R. Uh, can you all have a fun little day? Riverside, EVA, we provide you with breakfast from seven to nine, and a four in the morning at the pavilion. The river run will be about a K walk uh run. People start at eight thirty, and it's gonna be starting at the marina pavilion as well, uh and along along the river, practice about eight, eight hours, not about six, six too much. Uh, the parade will be starting at eleven A M, normal lineup on Fresh Street, first station. Uh, then uh then move to the marina, starting at twelve, we have a chili cook box from twelve to four. We have live music from three to nine thirty, live music is great, my colleague. And Spanish shot in the uh, or who not Spanish sound, and then DJ Khaled will be playing throughout uh throughout the day. And then we also have food sharks, vendors, cone rags, obstacle courses, mounts, houses, case painting. And just a fun little day with uh Marina to celebrate. And just a fun build day with uh, Marina to celebrate Florida. End it off with our fireworks show that the. Royal Canyon Hard Rock District has generously credited a grant to us that we went through a request for thirty thousand dollars to do a thirty thousand dollar fire promotion. I gotta say that um, out of ground on that beach is because of double now, that's very much what I love to do in our area. So it's um. An enjoyable third minute of the song of uh, fireworks. So. Um, other than that, um.
That's too much.
I'll be on the cruise ship for.
Thank you. Um, June fifteenth, we're gonna have our quarter, second quarter anniversary luncheon. Is sponsored by Totalon. I guess the year we are, we are, we're committing laws on our uh. Uh, open, open discussion to anybody intending to share any of this and updating about this. Um, and the state center now open Monday through Saturday.
My phone?
Yeah, prob- probably just.
Myself, I don't know. I personally indicated my first iPhone. Hey, this was gonna be sixty feet, then I just hold on to seventy, uh, seventy feet. And it's gone back and forth several times. You guys went ahead and built it. You didn't even give me proper notice. Like you said, it's going against the wedge or appeals. That's why I have appeal on that. You guys throw that to the wayside, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a letter that just is like a carrot basically. And when I get told, hey, we're just gonna knock down a road for three days. Then you get a permit that says you guys aren't going to stop the road. Then you, then you go ahead and stop the road for three days. And it's costing me thousands of dollars. I tried to say, let's sit down and communicate and work together, but I've been thwarted and recorded. And and I'll tell you, my lead from the emergency state, this whole presentation, which I would love to ask some questions specifically about. That 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 relates to this, okay? And it's going over the details of stuff with transparency. I don't believe what we said because I know when I came to the transportation service over on the road, none of that stuff was true. And I'm getting just one side and I can't even communicate my side and my angles on this. And I am asking you guys to follow me. The same rules that you gave to everybody else, that I follow those rules. And you had never once sat down and communicated with me as far as, hey, this is the rules, this is the foundation of what we're going for. And it is so frustrating because to sit through a presentation that only the top people can hear and not ask questions. That's the whole thing of a presentation. You, you, that needs to be stated before you even start the presentation. And 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 my, my issue is the transparency that you guys are showing. Is is totally wrong. And I, and I actually happen to have this violation against every party members because. There are conflicts of interest with the B C E A. That's why the, the chamber won't re-broadcast some of this stuff because they said, no. There's too much money, uh, as our court, they write the city and the chamber for B C E A and that's our funds. So how many up here on the city council, okay? Are, have funds that are coming in front of the B C E A or affected by the C E A three or four across the road? And we have to be transparent about those type of things and those type of issues. And it's really sad. Because it's affecting issues like that with our natural territory land. And we're gonna take a blind eye. To when it finally affects some people. It's, it's totally sad. And this is a money grab and a power grab. And that's why I'm saying people need to wake up when it comes to what, what is really happening and where are. Uh, we just had a school one that didn't pass. We, they are not fully being taxed and we need to hold them accountable on those type of things. And I would love to know the specifics of that, but everybody runs and hides and is afraid to ask and answer questions. That do need to be asked and answered. Thank you very much, your honor.
First line to say that I'm, I'm really proud of you that the council is taking the water quality issues basically. I know I walked toward the door and talked to a lot of people. I also know that there's a lot of wells in the city of this. Um, and I want to know if the city is doing any education, uh, bringing those people up to speed. I know Mr. Keeper Brown, that he was buying again, getting sewer and water to every citizen and and. In the city of Warren. And I, I hope that he's still planning on doing that. And I. I think those people that live within the city and have wells, um, maybe have those wells checked. And I hope that someone is, you know. We haven't been inside the city of Washington, let's see what's walking. Um, but I think that's something that you should consider is, is making a list of who is on, on the city wire. Also, you know, we still have those people in the city. That are on separate systems and separate systems are part of the problem. That is your problem. Uh, I think maybe we should. Start running on that, Mr. Keeper. That was your promise and I, I hope you're gonna try to keep your promise. Um, I'm hoping that, Mike, please, I could ask him some questions real quick. One is when you take the samples, I think we're supposed to take them out of the source. And then I believe it was at the city hall where you had the sample supposed to be taken. And my question is, is when we take the samples, are we taking it out of collector one, collector two, or a combination of those collectors? Do you know that? Do they take samples?
Unfortunately not.
Um, that might, that might be an indication of your ups and downs on your samples. Whether there's something comes collector one or collector two, it says E Q ring it, uh, wells, it doesn't specifically say that. I agree with the reporter that said that they had a sample of the, the two wells, but. Whether they come up at the same time, I don't know. But it might be a, a reason why that goes up and down. It is checking up. On your consumer confidence report that the city puts out. And has some questions that really took the E Q, uh, federal E A roles. And I think it really needs an update. For the year, well, for Monday, it says, it's a twenty twenty report and it has results from twenty fifteen and sixteen. Um, I know they want to do in July, uh, hopefully it will be out. But somehow we have a two point four on there as our nitrate level. That we gave out to our consumers, to our people. And there's only one two point four on there on the whole nitrate report. And if you would average them, the five point eighty-five and the five point nine seven. You don't get two point four. So I don't know where that number came from. If you look at the rules from the E A, it says that you should have the lows in there for lows and the highs of each test. And you'll have four tests this year instead of three for the one that they had. My other question is, in two thousand and eighteen, well, let's go back to the, the magic in the pond, I guess. My colleagues were saying what the city has put on, but we know that there's farming practices still on us too. So. That four hundred and twenty pounds of nitrate or nitrogen fertilizer that you say that you're putting on the ground. What is the farmer putting on top of that water? Do we know that? Um, do we know what stage you know how it is? I've worked for I R C consulting for years. I know a little bit about where the costs take up, when they take up. I know we're not pumping in winters anymore. That's been um. A problem, still a problem. I think it's going to be a problem. Or, um, support people as well. The plants aren't growing or not actually taking out the nitrogen. The puddling water, things like that. I do have the latest report. It's easy to get. Uh, your last report that I have that's been updated was uh. Four point eight three on five or two. Um, it's put out a couple of days ago. I asked the lady that there's four monitoring wells instead of three. I'd like to know what the. You go four, says you did. I don't know. Uh, six oh seven, six oh eight, six oh nine, six oh ten is what the, the load reports say. Um, and and I think you. I hope that I can get that information up there, but I think you were saying that your, your monitoring wells are thirty-three, twenty-three, and above thirty? That's pretty high for nitrate size. Those are the monitoring wells. They're around circle fifty-two. Yeah. It's not all, it's not all good. You know, you're below the standards, but. I don't know how you're gonna stay there. And I do know what those things cost. And Karen's right. They're, they're multi-million dollar projects when we get there. And there's, you know. There's really, I don't even know what the city can do. Hold on and wait, you know? Unless we can get state, federal people in here to start looking at these projects. The ones, you know, there's stuff outdated that. It has been the last twenty years. Um. The report, all the swell monitoring are, are very old. Hopefully they're updating them. Um, the county's working on it, the state's working on it, the governor's working on it. It's gonna be a problem. We're our county is the second highest nitrate. In the state under Cook. It's not going away. I'm glad you're working on it and I hope you continue to work on it. But I think the education, you know. Um, actually I just figured to move in, if you were set up, providing some water, getting those things out to people that. That don't have it education wise, um, about testing Iran or looking for more money for testing. Um, the city has any uh, to test their people in the city or not, um, I'm sure they're accountable. If somebody wanted it to happen, it happened. But nothing for anything about.
Thank you.
Was there anybody online that wanted to do public comment? Okay, having hearing now, we'll go to our resolutions. We'll go to resolution seven dash twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget resolution.
Uh, from the Fort Worth City Council of. Of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three as provided by the budget committee on the next month, two thousand and twenty-two. And so sixty-three million eight hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five. Further move to adopt appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July first. Twenty twenty-two as presented in resolution seven dash two zero.
I have second thought.
I have a motion in two seconds. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Pearson.
Yes.
Approved.
Counselor.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor.
Approved.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution eight dash twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three. And pose and categorize paths.
Ms. Mayor, I move in accordance to the council imposed following. Add power property taxes for tax year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the district. At the rate of. Four point two one one four per one thousand assessed value for permanent tax rate and any amount of three hundred and ten thousand for debt service and general obligation bonds. Not subject to measure five or measure fifty limitations. I further. Move, that's right, uh, that the taxes imposed are hereby categorized for purposes of Article. Section eleven B as the permanent tax rate of four point two one one four slash one thousand. Is subject to the general government limitation and that the general obligation on debt service of three hundred and ten thousand. Excluded from the general government limitation.
Any other motion in a second? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Pearson.
Yes.
Counselor Beal.
Approved.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Draymond.
Yes.
Counselor.
Approved.
Counselor the Prophet.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Move on to resolution nine dash twenty twenty-two, Marrow Treasure, the social officer for the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Minister Mayor, I move that the treasurer of Marrow County be authorized to invest the bonds of his body subject to. Guidelines of the provisions for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Pearson.
Yes.
Counselor Beal.
Approved.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Draymond.
Yes.
Counselor.
Approved.
Counselor Prophet.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-two, state share revenue, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the, for still in order in state statute two two one, twenty-seven seventy zero. The city elects to see state revenues for this year, twenty twenty-two.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Pearson.
Yes.
Counselor Beal.
Approved.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Draymond.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Approved.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, it's an order of policy at this point since we are past my P M, we need to officially extend or make an adjustment for this.
Uh, we are gonna move to executive session is what we're gonna do. And those individuals who are unable to stay may have to be excused. On as many cases that are.
I think if we would do the uh. Like you say, go into executive session. And do the deliberation of the labor and we can come back out and do the paintsters. Then if we see. We can either postpone the other two executive session things for tonight and. Maybe out there more.
Could be two or three days.
I think we, I wanna have time, just a minute to say. You know, we've scheduled the twenty eighth meeting at six o'clock. So can you stay till seven or seven thirty? Because if you can, then you can move these easily for that time. And and maybe even do our council reports. Then, you know, but we, we need to do the, the one, the painter one tonight.
That was my goal.
Yeah.
I just talked about.
I just said it fast forward. It sounds bad.
Thank you.
Kind of out of my ear.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
I'm sorry.
So that's what we'll do is we're gonna move into executive session. The city of Worthen will hold an executive session meeting for the permitted reason stated below under. O R S one ninety-two point six six zero two D. To conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry out labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. But the public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed during the executive session permissible. Executive session meetings are not subject to page two D twenty-five sixteen. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on. Any other deliberations during the executive session except the state general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room in person. And open the public virtual Zoom meeting again. So we are going to suspend.
You're going to recess.
Reset, that's the word. Reset our city council meeting. That they can talk to you right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we hereby resume our city council meeting after the executive session. We need to.
Please, Mayor, if I might, uh, staff recommends that you, uh, ratify that.
Please, Mayor, if I might, uh staff recommend that you gratify that the contractor contract will have been presented. Maybe most there will be that by contract that was presented for. Pay for this year, next year and following year. So twenty two, twenty four, twenty five.
Twenty four.
Twenty two. Oh.
I'm just gonna have a manager. And.
Yeah, I think you just have to pay for the. I think it was twenty two to twenty five. Yeah.
It says, yeah, June, July, twenty two to June, twenty five.
Second. Any discussion about that? Roll call please.
Councilor Pearson, yes. Councilor Beal.
Approved.
Councilor Gordon, yeah. Councilor Drago.
Yes.
Councilor Williams. Councilor Crawford.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so with that, we will enter the city council meeting. Uh, news at at this time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would just, uh, for the record, um, make a medical recommendation. You described the executive sessions that are also listed on your agenda and table those until upcoming for the record.
Okay, for the record, the executive session in one ninety nine, two point six six zero to me. And one executive session, one ninety nine, two point six six zero to I. Will be done on the, we're doing it to twenty eight, is that correct? That's our plan.
That's our plan.
That is the plan, we're gonna table those as well as the reported correspondence that are in our vision. Let's start with it. Meeting adjourned.
Did you see that I put in your package the deal?